Mr. President, I move the board proof January thirteenth twenty twenty five agenda.
Second.
Next we have the reporter superintendent.
Good evening Chairman Burton Vice Chairman Newton members of the Raytown Quality School District Board and members of our Raytown Quality School District Community. I just want to say Happy New Year. We started off this new year. Yeah, we started it all. So I just want to say thank you all for your flexibility and understanding as we navigated the challenges of our unpredicted weather. And I will use this as a forum just to tell all of our drivers and those who are watching, just make sure that we continue to exercise caution. As many of our side streets are still not completely clear, just remember we have buses that travel those routes and we also have children who are standing waiting for their bus and and are are also walking. So just use extra caution until all of this stuff we call snow and ice has disappeared. But I just want to thank our community for your support as we made these decisions in terms of closing school during the snow. Understand the decisions were made in an abundance of caution for our children and for our staff. We know that it is treacherous weather and the last thing we need is to have anybody injured during their trans their travels to and from school. I'd like to move down for the report of the superintendents to go to item eight point five with Dr. Chris Greiner who will provide us a report of our district and its performance with item eight point five. Dr. Greiner, thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox Board. Tonight I have the pleasure of sharing some updates of a recently published report card from the state of Missouri. As you might remember in December, I came to share highlights of the district's annual performance report. At that time, the district's report card was not available. Desi made these the status set available to districts at the very beginning of January. So we're going to go through a few slides tonight. Just a couple of items of overview. First of all, the data that I'm sharing tonight is not from this school year. It is from the twenty-three twenty-four school year. That's how the state utilizes the report card. It's always sort of a year behind. So I am sharing twenty-three twenty-four data. I have linked the full report card in the presentation, so you're welcome to take a look at the report. I'm not going to speak to all of the data points tonight. Pulled out the ones listed here regarding our performance in these areas and then also how that compares to districts surrounding us that share similar demographics. Those districts are Center View Hickman Mills, Independence, and Casey Mo. So we'll start with the proportional attendance rate. The state looks at a percentage of attendance or the percentage of students attending at least ninety percent of the time. That's called ninety ninety. In the state of Missouri last year, seven a little over seventy-eight percent of students in the state of Missouri as a whole attended school at least ninety percent of the time. That was a one point six percent increase compared to the prior year. Here in Raytown, we saw sixty-five point three percent of our students attending at least ninety percent of the time, and that was a slight decrease. If you might remember back to our conversation about APR last month, in order to earn accreditation points for attendance, districts must have a have seventy percent of their students attending at least ninety percent of the time. So how does Raytown compare to our benchmark districts? We ranked second out of six with overall rank and then I've also ranked our difference from the prior year. So growth, we ranked fifth again with that slight decrease. Graduation rate, state of Missouri, this is a four-year cohort grad rate, able to graduate with their cohort that they began their freshman year with within four years. The state graduates ninety point eight percent of their students in twenty twenty-four. That was about a percent and a half increase. Raytown saw a point seven percent increase in our graduation rate for four-year cohort. And that ranked us fifth out of the six comparable districts. Sixty-one point eight. We were second in attendance rate. We ranked fifth in graduation rate. Next dropout rate. So again, this looks at that four-year cohort, the percentage of students that after four years had left the district and had not re-enrolled in another public school district. So essentially they've they've dropped out, stopped attending school to our knowledge. Missouri, that dropout rate declined slightly to one point six percent. Raytown saw a nice decrease in this number down to five point one, of course, still five point one percent too many. But we did see a decrease in the percentage of dropouts compared to the year before, four percent decline. That put Raytown fifth out of six, but first in growth from the prior year. So this will be the only percentage we'll want to see a negative number in front of is how we're decreasing the number of dropouts. The next item is our one hundred and eighty day follow-up. So this is essentially measures the the way in which a district is able to follow up with its graduates to find out if they are engaged in meaningful work beyond high school. We were able to track down almost ninety-five percent of our graduates to find out what they are up to. That's higher than the state. We both saw increases, but we actually outpaced the state with this percentage. And compared to the other districts, we ranked third. We'll move on to student performance. This number shows the percentage of students that are at grade level or better in English Language Arts. So we test MAP grades three through eight in English Language Arts. We also test English two for our high school students. So combined, the state of Missouri saw forty-one point four percent of their of its students as a whole on grade level at proficient or advanced. That's a two percent decline from the year before. Raytown saw a slight increase of one point seven percent. And that on grade level percentage ranks us fourth among comparable districts tied for second in growth from the year before. Next is math. Again, the state of Missouri saw a decline in overall performance, thirty-nine point one percent of students in the state on grade level for math. We again test math grades three through eight and then also algebra. So students that are taking algebra while they're in high school. That percentage is included here as well. Raytown saw nine a little over nineteen percent of its students on grade level for math with an increase of three percent over the prior year. And that puts us at fourth among comparable districts and third among growth over the previous year. Science performance, we take three science assessments at fifth grade, at eighth grade, and then when students complete biology when they're in high school. The fifth grade test is a grade span covering third, fourth, and fifth grade standards. The eighth grade test is grade span covering sixth, seventh, and eighth grade standards. And so three, three tests, the state reported thirty-four point nine percent of students at grade level in science, a four percent decrease. We saw our percentage decrease as well, not as much, one point five percent down to nineteen point eight. And comparatively, we ranked third amongst benchmark districts. Social studies performance is just one test. Our students take after they complete American Government, their junior year, they take an assessment. Thirty-six percent of the state was at grade level. That was a three percent decline. We saw a nice increase in our performance at the high school. Our American Government students grew five percent over the prior year, up to twenty-eight point six. And that twenty-eight point six put us at second among comparable districts. Finally, ACT composite scores. ACT is an assessment that our some of our students take to determine whether or not they're college ready. We saw an increase in our ACT composite over the prior year of point three, while the state saw a slight decline. And that performance move saw a second among comparable districts, also tied for second in growth from the prior year. So overall, I think we are definitely seeing some of the growth from our students. That's a result as a result of our teachers' very focused and hard work to support them. I again want to just congratulate our staff for the way in which they collaborate together in teams to set goals, to track performance, to deliver interventions. They are working extremely hard to meet the needs of our students. Part of the the way in which we are tracking our growth comes through building school progress plans. Every month we provide updates regarding each of our buildings' progress plans. We also have first semester updates in the school progress plan updates that the board has access to at tonight's meeting. But those goals that our our buildings are setting around achievement, attendance, students' social emotional learning, trying to reduce risky behaviors and creating a sense of belonging, all of that work helps influence the success of our students. And we feel like that this work is very strategic and again is a direct result of the hard work of our staff. Some other resources that I will tell you, we've put in place intentionally this year to see our our students be more successful, our staff feel more successful. We've implemented a playbook that really outlines what it means to be a successful professional learning community, how adults can collaborate effectively. We have a lot of new staff. We have a lot of staff that are under certified. And so giving them as much training and support as possible is critical so that they can do the good work week to week to support our students. Heat map data is information that we use to really identify what are the most important standards we need to teach so that our students can be best prepared for the high stakes assessments that they take in the spring. We also use data from our local units. So every day our teachers are teaching units in math and ELA and science and social studies. And we're taking the data we're gathering from those units and using it to guide our instruction and our interventions through our collaborative teams process. And then just highlight some of the work again happening around professional learning, our our partnership with Marzano Strategies to try to improve the teaching craft. That's an investment the district has made and also an investment of time for our teachers to learn. We are trying to increase the amount of systematic interventions. So when students are taught but yet still struggle, they need more time and support. That's tier two. We've definitely been more intentional to deliver timely and systematic interventions for when students don't get it the first time. That's tier two. And then tier three is specifically for our students that are well below grade level. So not only do they may they need extra time and support for on-grade level standards, but there are standards they need some extra support in that are well below grade level. And so that's additional work that we are engaging in. Site intervention teams is a new structure we've brought to schools this year to really try to you think about all of the resources we have in a building that can meet students academic, social, emotional and also needs that their families may have. We're bringing these teams in all in an effort to see our students be more successful. So I believe the work, the right work is being done. We are seeing some progress and we're also committing to really focus on those areas where we're we're not seeing as much progress as we'd like to see. So be happy to entertain any questions from the board.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just publicly thank Dr. Greiner and his team for the work that they're doing and providing support to our leaders and to our teachers in order for us to see gains. While we see some of the momentum that's beginning to occur, I know that we'll continue to persevere and move forward because it's what's best and what's right for children. So thank you, Chris, and your team for the work that you do for our children. At this time, I'd like to also move to item eight point six with the with the report of our amazing student representatives. And I will just publicly say, yes, I'm happy to see.
Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox and Board of Education. I'm Mortez and I'm I'm an executive from Raytown South Student Council. After having our Christmas party before we went on break, we do not have a very busy January when it comes to school events. But next month we are planning to be very packed with celebrating our rival game on the seventh, presenting our annual Black History Month Student Program, hosting our second annual Jelly Bean Festival for District Special Needs Department, and our first court warming since before COVID nineteen. That's all we have coming up in the future and that we're planning actively. Any questions?
Absolutely.
I'm not sure if we have a date say yet, but I'm sure I can email you or I can reach you.
I'm a Jelly Bean participant.
I got you. I'll make sure that you get the information.
So what happens? So what happens in the Jelly Bean?
It's like it's a talent show for our CBI kids and our special needs kids. And they like perform and have fun. Yeah.
It's a good time.
Yes, can't wait to see it.
Make sure you email me please.
Got you. I promise. I might ask whenever I go to class tomorrow. Any other questions?
Green, make it green. Push the button.
Good evening. Sorry. Okay, so I'm going to do a recap of our December. We attempted to celebrate the students who had good attendance with a cozy winter party, but before going on break. But it would, we weren't able to pull it off because there were too many students. And we also had our Christmas party on December eighteenth. We had face painting stations, hot chocolate, music, and games for the families to enjoy, and Santa also came to visit. That is it. Thank you.
What's your name?
Zamari Sanders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this concludes the report of the superintendent. Be careful.
Good evening, Mr. Burton, Board of Education, Dr. Martin Knox. This evening we are honoring Michael Matt, a student at Raytown Middle School with the ray of hope. And it is presented to him in recognition of his exceptional commitment to academic excellence and remarkable courage and determination in advocating for himself throughout his school career. Here is a video with a little bit more about Michael.
Well, let's just define hope in describing Mr. Matt. Hope, the H stands for happy. He's always happy. No matter when you see him, he's a happy young man. I stand outside every morning playing music for my students and each morning he approaches me with a hug. Oh, he is optimistic. He is never ever down. You can never bring him down, down, down. He is always there to help and support whoever he can. P positivity. He's always positive upbeat. What can I do to support other kids, other adults in the building? And E in hope, energetic. He is one of those students that you want your students to know because he truly exudes what it is to be a ray of hope.
What makes me very hope is I help students do some of their work, like help them like during class time. I'm respectful to the teachers. I'm respectful to everyone. It makes me like feel good and it kind of makes like students days whenever I like help them.
He is one of the kids that embodies what Raytown Middle School is all about. He follows his wraps. He's respectful, accountable, positive, and safe. I've never seen him exhibit anything different than that.
I like Mr. Keller's class because he like teaches good stuff. He gives like explanations to like help do work. I like to volunteer like help pass out work.
He's extremely respectful. I remember the first week I met him, he always called me sir. He was like, yes, sir, no, sir, yes, sir. And he's just really respectful kid. It almost makes me laugh because sometimes he's like a little mini teacher. He even like writes down the kids' names that take pencils and stuff and he helps me keep track of things. He passes out papers. He's a great kid.
He reads the website. He reads through every ray of hope person that has been selected throughout the school year.
You know, I like to see like kids get recognized in the district for the stuff that they do. I kind of get like a happy feeling for them because they did pretty good. Like they do good to get the ray of hope.
That is Michael in a nutshell. I've been in education for over twenty-five years and I've never known of a student from suburban districts to an urban district who advocated for himself to be that ray of hope and to approach the superintendent of all people in the school district.
When he walks in the room, he's like a beam of sunshine and he just brings light to everyone around him. So I couldn't think of a kid that was more deserving to get a reward like this.
To the people watching, never give up and never give up on your dreams.
This young man is brave and I think he's going to make a huge impact in the world one day. Get ready. You're going to see Michael Matt.
So before we take our picture, I need to tell the story of how Michael Matt. So I'm substitute teaching at Raytown Middle and I was on bus duty. Yes, I still know how to do bus duty for those beautiful ass. And there's this cute little fellow who walked up to me and said, hey, I have something to say to you. He said, I read the website every day and I know everything about the district. He said, and I think the ray of hope is amazing. I love everybody who's been a ray of hope, but you know what? I'm a ray of hope too. And I said, okay, mom, you sent me an email to tell me why you should be a ray of hope. And so I don't know if this is dangerous or not, but when he got to the bus, my phone chimed and I told him that was my email. And so I did my homework. I asked Mr. Alonso to tell me about him because I thought he was amazing. But that's the teachers and every teacher responded how amazing he was. And I knew that from the first time we met. So I want you to continue to be who you are and rub off on some people because you are a ray of hope. And so our ray of hope this time is the first time we've done student advocacy.
Michael, who do you have with you here tonight? Your who do you have with you?
I'm his grandma and his grandpa. He's been with us since he was one. Oh, that's awesome. And he is a special boy. Every since he started kindergarten, he has just been latched on to everything. We wonder where he gets it from.
So Michael, I'm guessing you could ask your grandma and grandpa for anything you want tonight and probably.
Good job.
Man, that's great. Every month, better and better. Next on the agenda is the public comment period. We have no one that has signed up, so we'll move to the next agenda item. Which is a board committee reports. Is there?
Mr. President. There's no, no, no report from Finance Committee, but I will move the board proof that October fourteenth twenty twenty-four Finance Committee meeting minutes and December ninth twenty twenty-four Board Policy Review Committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby.
I do not have access to reading the report for tonight.
Right. Vote. Your vote.
Yes, yes.
Next, a new business. If a motion, starting a firewall.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approved the purchase of Next Gen Fortnite Firewall for the yellow dog in the amount of two hundred fifteen thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approved the purchase of new cubicle furniture from SSI Furnishing in the round of sixty thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and cents.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
President, I move that the Board of Education approved the twenty twenty-five twenty twenty-six Career and Education Plan and God is presented.
All right. Second. Motion made and seconded. Good evening.
Good evening, President Burton, Vice President Newton, Board, Dr. Martin Knox. Happy to present to you this evening the culmination of a lot of collaborative work with several groups of stakeholders as we prepare the course guide for next school year. I know we just got back to school today, but we're already thinking ahead to twenty-five twenty-six. And so what you have before you is the revised course guide. You also have a separate attachment that highlights some of the updates. Of course, there's always many updates as we move year to year and try to improve our programming for students, give them lots of options on ramps and off ramps, different courses. You'll notice that we're bringing online several new courses next year that we're excited about. We're adding another project Lead the Way course at the middle school to continue to give students options for robust electives that we're very excited about. You'll also notice an ACT prep course as we were just talking in the report card presentation from Dr. Greiner. We're working to continue to give students skills in the tier one classroom, but also on the assessment itself. So that elective ACT prep course that many other districts have will be useful for students there. We're also expanding some of our ELA offerings specifically at the high school to allow for more choice and flexibility for ELA. And one thing I really want to highlight is our partnership with the UCM Workforce Development Program. We're piloting this second semester with a group of students at RSA a warehouse jumpstart course. And what these workforce development programs allow students to do, it's it's similar. It's in the vein of of a Herndon where they're getting and earning an industry recognized credential, but it's not. but it's not something that takes them away from their school site for an entire half a day. So, for instance, in the warehouse jumpstart course, students take a series of coursework that's offered through UCM, and they provide the instructor for us. And that student actually leaves with OSHA-10 certification, and they leave with a forklift operator's license or certification. And for Missouri, it's a forklift four-five certification. So just as we continue to think about what happens next for students when they leave our high schools, we know that some students will go directly to the workforce or military college, junior college, things like that. We want to continue to offer a catalog that gives them lots of options. We're really excited to bring some of these workforce readiness electives onboard. Those are kind of the big highlights. There are always some other minute changes that are far less interesting to talk about, but you do have that access and happy to answer any questions you have about this course guide.
Mr. Brit.
Sir.
Have we gotten with any, and I probably should be asking you, Dr. Greiner, this, have we gotten with any other outside companies since we have added this?
Not yet. So what we, so step one is making sure that we have it in the course guide so that we can offer it. Some of those specifically, the warehouse jumpstart, there's obviously ripe for industry partnership. First, we want to get it in the catalog, make sure that it's available to students, and then gauge student interest and sort of, you know, decide if those courses they're gonna make or not, and then really work through the execution of how and when those courses get delivered and what partnerships we might make as a result of that.
Okay, because the OSHA-10, that comes with the course, obviously, right? And that's no charge to the children. Man, that's absolutely tremendous.
That is. Yeah.
That is big.
Yeah. We want lots of opportunities for students. So it's just whatever's happening once you cross that stage and you get that diploma, whether it's a four-year university, that's fantastic. But if not, we're still offering you something that you can leave and enter the workforce with a leg up on someone who just left. So as we continue to work towards those market value assets, you know, the real-world learning, one of those pathways is industry-recognized credentials, and these workforce development programs will help students acquire those. So we're really excited about it. We're still developing it, but step one is get it in the catalog so we can offer it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Man, you guys are fantastic. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Brit, first of all, the haircut for me, man. Let's start there.
I appreciate it.
The obvious, looking good.
Thank you so much.
Certainly, you speak a little bit to the buy-in from the students in the creation of these new courses. I know you guys do a ton of homework and research beforehand, but I just want for people who are listening at home, just kind of speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, great question. So we obviously look at several factors. One, we look at just enrollment numbers of courses over time. You know, what students like, you know, 10 years ago maybe is lesson vote. Maybe that, you know, we need to remove some things and add some different electives. This is a highly collaborative process that happens through our department, but also through building-level counselors. So really, the secondary school counselors, they kind of know what the students are asking for, what they're looking for. They're having those individual career and academic planning conversations with students. So we don't necessarily go directly to the students, but for instance, you know, adding the Project Lead the Way Medical Detectives class at middle school, what we know is that middle schoolers need more high-interest electives. We have, that's an area where we can grow. Everyone seems to think that this medical detectives class, which it sounds really cool when you read the description, is gonna be really popular. We did this similarly last year. We added an Intro to Music Technology class at the middle school. It's been wildly popular. They've had to create, I think, at the building level, more sections than they anticipated to do that. So we kind of follow the trends. We follow enrollment trends and request trends. And then really, we rely a lot on department chairs and department coordinators that are teachers in the building and that counseling center to help us get a sense of what we need. Now, of course, you know, we would, some students might, you know, like to have a class on Taylor Swift discography, but you know, we have to have some parameters in there. We got, we gotta have some parameters and kind of keep in line. We always want to add things that lead through a pathway. So we don't want, we try not to have sort of like dead-end courses. We're like, okay, you could take this one class, but there's really nothing, no way to extend it or build upon it. So we try to fit things in based on need and desire. That's the customer, but also that's kind of nudging them towards an area of emphasis.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brit.
Take a vote. Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Motion passed. Next on the agenda, first read of 2526 Academic Calendar and 2627 Tentative Calendar. New discussions. All right. Inclement weather days forgiveness.
Strawberry moon.
Good evening, Mr. President, Vice President, members of the Board, Dr. Martin Knox. I don't know about you, but January has been a long year. So here we are before the Board asking for forgiveness. Obviously, those inclement weather days, we closed the district in the best interest and staff safety for all RQS employees. And so those contract days at this point have not been worked. So our options are to extend the school year to fulfill those contract days or to go to the Board and ask for forgiveness for four of those days for all RQS employees. And so tonight, the proposal before you is to forgive four of those days for all RQS employees. Questions about that.
Motion.
Okay, I was just gonna ask, are you wanting a motion?
Yeah, we got, yeah.
It's on right now?
Yeah.
We need to hear it. Yeah, sure. Yeah, we have to check. I knew we'd forgive one day. No, it's not a forget.
It should be there.
There we go. I move that the Board of Education approved forgiveness of inclement weather days of January 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, and all Raytown C2 staff members.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Motion passed.
And if I might, I know this isn't on the agenda, but I would like to just thank the Board for your continued support of our staff, our teachers. We know that they work diligently, and with the unforeseen weather-related conditions, the forgiveness helps a great deal. We know that our families have already planned some of the days. We know that our staff has also planned for some of those days if we were to have to extend the school year or take away from spring break, and we tried to avoid that at all costs. So I just wanted to thank the Board publicly for always supporting our staff and recognizing them for their hard work and their efforts. Thank you.
May I do something off the record, too? I'll have to, I'll have to agree. We're president, Matt Flick.
Go ahead.
I would like to thank Mrs. Gwen, Dr. Gwen and Ms. Houston for letting me interrupt their school day in this, doing that Santa act, and I totally interrupted their school day. And I would like to thank the superintendent for letting me come up there and interrupt the school day and having a blast with their kids and getting totally rowdy with the cafeteria staff. And I ask to be excused, and that's why I approve. Forgiveness for that spring break. So thank you.
Did you take the whole day?
No, I took a good portion. I feel like anything could be excused for the right reason, weather being one, and not even interrupting me too.
Is there a motion? All right. Next on the agenda is revised 2024, 2025 Academic Calendar.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approved revised 2024-2025 Academic Calendar as presenting.
Second.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. You know, we're gonna have more trouble when the Chiefs win the Super Bowl.
Yes, we are. Because it's happening.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
I didn't have votes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bobby. Was it the last one or this? All right, Ms. Bobby, you can vote now.
I didn't vote, but then two, or two items. So I'm voting for both of them.
Okay.
Motion passed. All right, next we have first read. AC prohibition against illegal discrimination, harassment. Next one is the first read for policies listed. And these policies were submitted from first read from MSBA's book Interchange in Law. That's for information. Did you just bow of reading all of those policies? I love it. That's a really. I love it.
I move that the Board approved the January 13th, 2025 Percentage of Death as Presenting.
There's a second motion?
Second.
All right, I'll read the donations for the vote. We have a donation of $200 for supplies from Michelle Reed to Herd and Brew Center's hat artists. A donation of $50 from BWSD Number Two to Three Trails Free School. Donation of hats, gloves, socks, worth $300 from Idaho United Church Christ Robinson Elementary School. Donation of $200 for breakout graduating class of 1974 Jeffrey Wilson to Raytown South Vocal Museum. Donation of $200 from 50th Reunion Committee Jeffrey Wilson to the Raytown South Library. We thank so much for your donations and greatly appreciate especially those who receive these gifts, and they helped us to continue our work in this district and move our children, our students toward success. Thank you very much.
Bobby's vote.
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, I move that the Board adjourns the regular Board of Education meeting at 7:43 PM.
Motion made and seconded.
Thirded.
Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.